But do appreciate everyone who's joined us today to listen in on the conversation today. We are here for Baltimore City Recreation and Parks, BCRP Director Moore. How much time do you anticipate needing for your presentation? Fifteen minutes, excellent. Director, I'm going to turn it over to you in a second. I'm going to ask you to introduce each of the members of your senior team that are at these, at the council member desks, first and last name and position title, and then jump right into your presentation. We've also been joined by Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District. Director, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Councilman Castello, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Ramos, and Councilman Middleton. I am Reginald Moore, Executive Director for Baltimore City Recreation and Parks. Sitting up here with me, I have Jocia Smith, our Chief of Staff, Ken King, our CFO, Brendan Brown, who is our Forestry Supervisor, Edward Willen, Deputy Director of Recreation, Karen Jordan, Deputy Director of Recor-- I'm sorry, Edward Willen, Deputy Director of Parks, Karen Jordan, Deputy Director of Recreation. Gina Green is Director behind me, she's our Chief of HR. Next to her is Jovan Griffin, our new DEI Coordinator. And next to Jovan is Adam Borman, our Chief of Capital and Planning. And then finally, we have Jenny Morgan, who's our Legislative Liaison. And with that, I will continue. As the Director of Baltimore City Rec and Parks, I am honored to address the importance of our parks and recreational facilities in shaping the well-being and quality of life in our community. I would like to take this opportunity to present during this budget hearing some of our accomplishments for FY24, which reflects our commitment to enhancing experiences and opportunities available to our community. In 2024, the agency was heavily involved in developing our BCRP playbook, a comprehensive plan that will set the vision for the future. During the plan development phase, our consultants spent significant time speaking with staff, community members, and plan advisory team. We're excited to see the final plan, which should be complete by the end of the first quarter of FY25. This year marks the fourth year of Strategic Plan REC 2025. Throughout the year, we have continued to focus on our four pillars: our culture, our work, our places, our community. Our culture: BCRP is excited being the second city agency to complete the year-long trauma-informed care training. Our entire workforce has completed the training, during which we learned new strategies such as mindfulness and restorative circles. Additionally, we have established a critical incident team to manage issues as they arise with staff. We will be working in FY25 to implement the trauma-informed care plan created during the training. Our human resource team has been extremely busy with hiring new faces in our organization. We started the year with 109 vacancies. We are on track to close the year with 51 vacancies, a 53% reduction. Notably, BCRP has hired our first female tree trimmer in 37 years. We are focused on diversity and inclusion, and we have hired a DEI Coordinator who's here with us today. Additionally, we have increased our training development spending by 30%, focused on a well-trained, diverse workforce to meet the many needs of our community. Our work: Baltimore City Rec and Parks have been seeing an increase in programming during the budget cycle. Thanks to the support of Councilman Stokes, the administration, and this council, we received an additional $800,000 in programming, one-time spending for this budget year. We added 64 new leader-led programs, totaling 5,146 new participants, started a new program called Saturday Exploration, and received multiple-- I'm sorry, and we revised Mobile Recreation. The leader-led programs have ranged from arts and crafts to fitness to chess to martial arts, gardening, STEM, to name a few. The Saturday Exploration Program has engaged teenagers with experiences throughout our city, to include games to Coppin State College tours and visits to city attractions. Mobile Recreation is back, and we'll be planning to visit various communities throughout the spring and summer months. We introduced, for the first time ever, Charm City Lights, a 240,000 LED light display that illuminated Jewelier Park skies during the holiday season. We had over 10,000 visitors drive, bike, or walk over the full week period. In 2025, we plan to expand the route with more walking and bike days. Additionally, to ensure that our community have access to technology, we partnered with BSET and the Enoch Pratt Library to provide over 400 Chromebooks at various rec centers. I am thankful for the hard work of our aquatics team, which has focused on ensuring well-trained managers oversee our pools. The emphasis has been on safety, security, capacity, and safety in systems to minimize downtime. With new and improved mechanical systems at our pools, clear operational procedures must be followed to maintain these systems. Our lifeguards are trained and equipped to keep our residents safe. We look forward to a great summer. Next, our spaces. This year, our spaces saw significant improvements, thanks to the offer of funding. To date, we have installed eight new playgrounds, with the remaining 15 scheduled to be completed by the summer. We broke ground on three swimming pools, Walter P. Carter, Towanda, and Coldstream's Pools, which are on track to be open by summer of 2025. For the first time, we opened all six of our park pools on Memorial Day weekend. We saw record numbers of attendance over the past two weeks, totaling 10,358 visitors at our six pools. Patterson Park Pool and Cherry Hills Flash, which underwent renovations, were complete on time to open at the start of the season, and later this summer, we will celebrate the opening of Ambrose Candy. We saw a groundbreaking Parkview Recreational Center, Chickwell Recreational Center, and the Gardenville Recreational Center, and the ribbon cutting of our Mayfield Recreation Center/Esports Lab, and a nature center at Silver and Arboretum. BCRP currently has over 100 million active construction projects, thanks to the support of the current administration and council. We are transforming the assets of Baltimore City Recreation and Parks. And finally, what are we doing with our community? The community plays a vital role in all the work we complete daily. Thanks to the partnerships with Friends of Silver and Arboretum, we opened a new state of art nature center at Silver. Our continued partnership with Parks and People has resulted in projects such as Gwinns Falls Trail Project, Solo Gills Phase One, Henrietta Lacks Phase One, and Phase Two that's being designed now, Leon Day Park. We maintained a strong partnership with South Baltimore Gateway Partnership, which provided $5 million to renovate the Carroll Park Recreation Center, with a ribbon cutting scheduled at the end of the month. Our partnership with Waterfront Partnership is gearing up for Phase Two, as we saw the success in Phase One of Rasfield. The ranger program is back. We have seen over 2,000 interactions with our residents at our larger parks. Our rangers have spent many hours training with the state ranger program, which will yield a more efficient and engaging team. Our community engagement team has held 267 either meetings or events, engaging in 5,810 constituents. We are thankful for the support of our friends groups and communities in supporting our agency. As I close our statement, I want to take each and-- I want to thank each and every one of the staff of Baltimore City Rec and Parks for their hard work and commitment to Baltimore City residents. And with that opening statement, I will continue now with our PowerPoint. So the first slide is a quick summary overview of the agency. As you are familiar with our mission is to improve the health and wellness of Baltimore through maintaining quality recreational programs, preserving our parks and natural resources, and promoting fun, active lifestyles for all. Our two physical goals for this year, one is to, once the conclusion of our comprehensive plan, that we start the implementation of this 10-year plan. And then our second goal is we have hired a team coordinator that's dedicated to help develop team programming, and one of their goals is to improve programming and also be able to see an increase in participants by 15% over this next year. Our next slide is just a summary of our org chart. And so the first budget is 644, which is our administrative. That's pretty much where the executive leadership, as well as administrative support team sits. One of the quick highlights there is there's $100,000 for our consultants to continue to work in helping us to implement our comprehensive plan. And then also, with the many different contracts that we have in our agency, we saw the need to add a contract administrator to manage those contracts. Our next service is 645, which is our aquatics facility. Of course, this is where we house all of our aquatics team, our lifeguards, and their leadership, thanks to the current leadership and their success in recruiting. I was just talking to Councilman Dorsey when we kind of started this. A couple of years ago, we was in this room talking about how we had lifeguard shortages and how we was going to get lifeguards into the pools. But with their recruitment, with their training, we have seen an increase of young people. But also, I want to thank this administration for allowing us to offer retainers retention bonuses for our young people, to keep them engaged as well. So we're looking really good this year. Got a lot of young people, a lot of smiles that's serving our community. And as I stated earlier, we've, in two weeks, we've seen over 10,000 visitors at our six pools. Our next service is, of course, our park maintenance is ultimately responsible for all our parks, they're responsible for all our mowing. A couple of highlights there is the increase for the additional mowing contract. As you all know, a couple of years ago, we went to a seven-day cutting period during growing season. There was a time when we used to do that in every 14 to 10 days, which we know that was almost impossible. So we now have the, we've added additional money so we can support that weekly mowing. And then also, as we continue to improve our playgrounds, we got to be able to maintain these playgrounds, and so there's 200,000 that's included to work on maintenance contracts, beyond just replacing playgrounds, how we maintain them, and then money to continue to improve our facility maintenance team. Our next service is youth and adult sports. Really excited what they're doing over in youth and adult sports. Namely, one of the big focuses has been what can we do to help support middle school sports? This current budget year, we was, we received a benefit of a $200,000 grant from the state, from courtesy of Senator McCray. This year in our budget, to continue on with that operation, there's $200,000 that's been included in our general fund to support. And then, just as we continue to clean our house, there was a position that was sitting in youth and adult sports that's really our chief of special events, so we moved that position into the right service area. Of course, one of our largest service areas and divisions is our community recreation centers. One of the things that we want to continue to do there is support and find creative and innovative ways to continue to improve our summer camps and summer offerings. We've worked with BBMR to allocate some funding from table games to help support and have direct funding for our summer accounts versus solely depending on each individual rec center to do that. It gives us better control and also better opportunity to program. And while we have multiple facilities under renovations, the goal was to reduce or remove that funding until those centers come back online, which will be coming back in future budgets to bring that funding back. Special facilities is our service line 649. In that line, there's two important things. One is this is the service line where that individuals move from youth and adult sports was moved into special events. But we've been hearing the concerns about Kerry Murray and the continued growth of Kerry Murray's Nature Center. We have contract teachers, but what we're focused on doing in this year's budget is making, creating six new FTEs, which is similar to the strategy that we did when we improved our ranger program. We went from contract employees, seasonal employees, to FTEs, which gives us a greater chance of bringing in more people that's more committed to staying. So we're really excited to see that and continue to see Kerry Murray grow. 650 is our horticulture division. There, our teams continue to maintain our two largest facilities, Rowland's Conservatory, as well as Seven Arboretum, and the Vonness Center and the Mansion. And what would, one of the highlights there is additional funding to improve the security system at those current facilities. 651 is where our seniors reside. Pretty much the service maintains at the same level. However, we will continue to expand our senior program, and one of our senior sites have been down due to some flooding and damage, but we're excited that that facility will be coming back online this fall, which is why you see us starting to move our target numbers back up, because we're getting that facility back, which is the John Booth Center, which is located in the Patterson Park area. Therapy to Recreation, one of the things we've been doing in Therapy to Recreation is focusing on centralizing our programming and finding a more dedicated home. That transition has been at Fair and Baybrook Recreation Center. And so what we're seeing because of this additional increase in programming that we needed to focus on, increasing the heating fuel costs, that's one of the budget highlights. But our program is continuing to grow. As you can see, those numbers are continuing to trend upward. 653 is our park programs and event space. This is where our special event sits. This is also where our outdoor recreation, that's doing amazing work out in our fields. One of the things we realized a couple of years ago is we needed more dedicated funding for outdoor recreation, and so we have been able to support that with table games, so that they can have a clear budget versus having people in different budget accounts throughout the agency. We really streamlined that process, as well as there's a one-time $200,000 that we're using to support our special events, to help them in getting equipment, as well as supporting some of their special events. And our last service area is urban forestry. As our urban forestry team has continued to work to improve, there's been some transition. Three years ago, Eric Deal retired from our agency. His number two guy left and moved to California, and then we brought in Dan Coy, and then now Dan has moved on to the state. But I will say, in the interim of all that, Sam C. has done a tremendous job of maintaining our forestry division and continuing the leadership. And then now we have with us, as I stated earlier, Brandon Brown, who is ultimately responsible for the day-to-day operation of our forestry team. One of the things that Dan wanted to put in before he left was better streamline our process, so now Sam will deal with more of the environmental and plantings, and then Brandon will deal with the more of the operation of day-to-day. So really thankful of Sam and his dedication and his commitment to making sure that we didn't have drops there in our forest division. And the work that we're doing at Count Smalls, I mean, it goes without saying, the work that Sean Preston is doing there. So as Sam, Sean continues to improve his operations, there will be a time when we needed more funding. So there's a $714,000, $14,000 increase in funding to help Sean in what he's doing at Count Smalls. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I will yield to any questions and discussions, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilman Z. Cohen, First District Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District Member of the Committee, Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I guess I just want to first thank your whole office and division for all the work that you continue to do throughout the city, whether it's, you know, you have advanced our recreation centers, the aquatic centers, basketball courts, playgrounds. I mean, you continue to push forth those efforts to getting all of the renovations and things done, and so, you know, we'd like to thank all of you for that continued work that you do. And as you ended, you kind of answered my question with forestry. I'm sure everyone on the council probably has a question about forestry. And I think part of the reason is, and maybe you can elaborate more, you know, as we give things to housing, DPW, DOT with different concerns, the first thing they, one of the things that they continue to say is that, well, we're waiting for forestry to get those trees pruned, or get, you know, that particular piece done. So I don't know if you have an added plan, or how you're going to continue to connect with those partnerships with the other agencies.
So I will start, and Brendan, if I'm, Brendan, if I'm missing anything, please jump in, but I can tell you that our, our teams are working with our sister agencies, and some of the things that they're doing is they are having to work weekends to do some of their work, because what we, we want to support all of our sister agencies, but we have also needs in the community and service requests as well. So to balance some of this, what we have seen is our teams are working weekends, but what we have told all of our teams, that we're not going to allow anyone to work seven days a week. It's just not safe for them and others. But we are working with our sister agencies, and we have seen a significant increase in that workload. But if there is anything in particular that someone is waiting on that, we need to expedite, then we're more than happy to sit down with the agency if they need that.
And I think one that stands out would be DPW. So I guess there probably needs to be conversation there. And I'm, as far as employing and getting certified people for urban forestry, is that in the making? Or I think the last time we had a communication, you had some apprentice. Are they still there, or are there more, or what's the update with that?
Yep, so we have our tree trimmer apprentice program. So essentially, we use our tree trimmer positions through a two-year training program. So we have 11 tree trimmer positions in the agency. Three of those right now are occupied by apprentice. The apprenticeship program is two years, so in those two years, we have a seat for them to sit in. So we're seeing success in that. There was a time when we were before you, we were seeing a bunch of turnover in that tree trimmer apprentice, that's not our current experience right now. Our tree trimmers are already through the first year of their apprenticeship, so they have one more year to finish, and then they'll occupy those seats. There may come a time when we are coming back to ask for more of those positions, but right now, the flow is working. So we have 11 positions, three of which are highlighted or singled out for the apprenticeship program, and we'll continue to monitor that. But it's a two-year rigorous program that we work with the outside agency to certify them, so we've seen success in growing that. We have had some preliminary conversations of talking about some bridging between high school graduates out of the CTE programs and coming into our agency and positions. One of the things that we are intentional about, we don't want to have a program that doesn't have a seat for the person that's sitting at the end of it. So our HR Chief, Ms. Green, is starting to have those conversations and figure out how we can present a program and have accompanying FTEs for those young people to sit in. So that's one of the things that you should look forward to seeing the update within the next year.
And as a follow-up, is your equipment up to date? Do you need more funding for equipment, or you, is there, what's, are there any problems with that that you're facing?
So unlike in previous years where we would come and say we need stump grounders, one of the things Brendan brings is a lot of knowledge, knowledge in the industry. And what we're, we're in the process of ordering now is a more advanced stump grinder system that would not be as demanding as the ones that we currently have to put in place. But Brendan, I'll yield to you if there's additional equipment, but I think the request or need for stump grounds, I think we're coming to a better solution and a better strategy. One of the things we also have spoke about is the skill sets. With this newer technology and equipment, while it still needs skill set, but it won't demand as many people that's needed. Brendan, if there's anything you want to add to that?
The, as far as the stump grinder goes, this new equipment, we, yeah, we're ordering a tractor of machines, can be a lot more versatile than the tow behind machines that we previously used, which should make us able to get that many more stumps done in-house than previous. As far as other equipment, we are currently working on with DGS to get a new log truck. Both of our log trucks are very old and consistently breaking down, and in storm situations, they're a vital piece of equipment for clearing roads. They can get the amount of work that 10 men can do in an hour done in 15 minutes. So, you know, that would be a log truck, stump grinders, and chippers, frankly. We have two chippers in-house, so we're spending a lot of time not being able to get work done efficiently with the, with the lack of, you know, equipment that we have.
Thank you. So if you need help with that advocacy, I'm sure we are here to do that and help you with that, especially since we're having more storms and, you know, the weather is changing. We're, just a reminder, we're your advocates for that. So, Mr. Chair, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you, Director, and good to see your team. You guys do an amazing amount of amazing work with very little, and so I really appreciate the work you guys are doing. And, you know, of course, echoing my colleague sentiments, we are here to support you and make sure you, to the best of our ability, have the resources you need to do well. I also want to give a shout out to your recreation team. I was able to go out and on a kayak this weekend on the Inner Harbor, which was absolutely beautiful. I highly recommend folks taking advantage of that opportunity. We, of course, now have blue trails, water trails throughout the city that we're trying to encourage people to take advantage of the city from the water, and it's just really, really cool to see the city from that perspective. I think it's something we should absolutely be advocating for and investing in. So I have questions about trees. Shocker. First, what is our current backlog on tree maintenance and tree removal requests?
I figured, I figured somebody may ask that question.
You knew it was going to be me, too.
Let me, let me flip to that document. Go ahead, Brendan, go ahead and jump on it.
So our current backlog for tree removals is 1,003, with 534 of those being assigned. The maintenance prunes are 1,691, with 1,057 of those being assigned. And then the stumps is 2,479, with 412 of them currently assigned.
And as you can see, Councilman Conway, the tree removals are significantly down compared to, so we've really been focused on that. And one of the things I want to add is, one of the areas that will continue to be focused always is around stumps. And I spoke with our team about what was happening with stumps, and some of this has to do with our contractors. They had some subs that was not removing the stumps properly according to code, so there's, the primes had to cease their operation because there wasn't meeting our QAQC. But according to what Brendan shared with me, the prime feels that they'll have a couple more crews that they can add to this in the next month or so. So makes, and I think one of that is going to be is making sure that the subs are properly trained.
Yeah, and what is the, because I remember last year, when we requested that information, we had a rough timeline for response for that. I think we estimated it was about 11-month backlog. What is our estimated time to get through that backlog?
On stumps or trees? Which one you want?
I believe it's tree maintenance.
Tree maintenance?
Yeah.
Our current, so we've switched the way that we're assigning work to kind of exploit contractor efficiency through density. So we're assigning the work by zip code now. Some zip codes are caught up to April on removals and December on prunes. The oldest, the zip codes with the most aging work orders are August on prunes and June, about a year out on, I'm sorry, August on removals and June on prunes. But that's from when I started in February. We've moved up 10 months on removals and eight months on prunes. So it's, the system seems to be working.
So just so I understand clearly, in order to catch up and get fully through the backlog, we would expect that for removals, we'd finish that around August, not this coming August, the next?
It's hard to say, but yes. The, I guess, you know, conservatively, we are, but we are, now that we're up and running with the contract, the contractor's getting us more and more crews. So we're, we've seen an increase in efficiency. And these numbers aren't entirely accurate because the, it doesn't account for the invoicing, QA, and other, you know, things like that that are required to get things closed out first. So we might actually be closer to that than we realize.
Got it. Would you mind sending those numbers to us?
Absolutely.
It helps us keep, yeah, make that an official request, just to share those numbers with us, so we could have it correctly. And just of note, so last year, we fought to get you guys some additional funding, $250,000 to take a chunk out of that backlog. I'm curious, one, have we been collecting data on the speed with which the $250,000 has helped us to work through that? And two, how, how much has it actually been able to allow us to take a chunk out of that backlog, if you understand the question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, and we, because of, you know, the 18-month backlog that we had on work, we thought the wisest thing to do with that money was to dedicate it towards catching up on that backlog. We were able to get three extra crews in between the two contractors to help increase productivity. I can give you some more information on that in a more visual way, if you'd like afterward,
though. That would be helpful. Do you have any sort of high-level insights on how we've spent that money to date, or?
It's been mostly on removals and prunings and getting that, that stuff caught up. The, and on the Patterson Park project, and most recently, we assigned a group of 30er removals in Edgecombe Park, a park up in northwest that was in some dire need of some attention. So we've been trying to focus that in on the community as much as possible.
Got it. I'll stop there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sticking with the trees, could you, the tree, when someone-- Sticking with the trees, could you, the tree, when someone has a stump that's going to be removed, but would like another tree, I think you were on an email exchange with my office about, we, we've been having just some trouble with making sure the loop is closed. So since you're working hard to kind of reform how all of the operations work, which I'm grateful, and I think all of us are grateful, what is that going to look like? Is it just a 3-1-1? Do people still have to fill out another form? Because we, you know, the stumps, as you start to remove them all, people are going to want those trees. And people are going to want trees even if there isn't a stump there. So just understanding a little bit about what a new, if you're going to do a new process, what is it going to be or, or what is that process now? Thank you.
So I oversee the maintenance side, the tree removals, pruning, stump grinding, things like that. Sam, who's the acting chief of foresters on vacation, he oversees the planting side of things. But I've become pretty acquainted with the, the process. Once the stump is ground out, if a resident would like a new tree, the best way to have them communicate that to us would be through the treesplease@baltimorecity.gov email address so they can send that in. And then our team either puts it on our plan for planting or sends it to one of our third-party planting partners. The, our tree planting contract that was in place last year unfortunately had to end. So we didn't get nearly as much done through that contract as we would have liked. But we're hoping to get another one set up soon so we can be in control of more of that and be able to address those more directly with constituents.
It's my understanding, though, that you're working with Tree Baltimore and then there's another contractor?
Blue Water Baltimore.
Blue Water and Tree Baltimore are your contractors?
Baltimore Tree Trust, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, uh-huh, Tree Trust, okay. And for some reason, that didn't happen this past year. So now we're, need to catch up on all of our tree plantings. Now, when somebody emails that address, trees, tree please or trees please?
Trees please.
Treesplease@baltimorecity.gov. My understanding is that there's approved trees, right? We can't just ask for a random tree because there are some that we don't want planted, right? And so would then the answerer of the email then answer back to the constituent and ask them, here's the list of approved trees, which one would you like? Or is the department, is the forestry saying, you're getting this kind of tree?
They should, this constituent should have some input into that. I can talk to Jamila and get back to you about what exactly that process looks like. One, one of our urban foresters handles that inbox and then communicates with them. But I, I'm not familiar, honestly, with that whole process. So I can, I can ask her and then I can get back with you.
Yeah, we, I think we should do a formal request on that since Sam is not able to, to be with us today, who I also agree has done a great job since he's been in forestry. And, and both have been very responsive, so I appreciate that. But yeah, I'd just like some clarity on the tree request system. And that way, we can be, we can inform our residents. And I'm sure my colleague has a follow-up on that.
I do. Thank you, Councilwoman. The, the simple follow-up was, why don't we use 3-1-1?
That's a good question. The, I, I don't know. I guess the system was in place before I started. I, but that's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, everybody, that's, I was going to ask that too, is that, you know, everybody knows to use 3-1-1. So Madam CAO, is that something that we can look at in terms of tree request is to use 3-1-1? And then that request goes to forestry, just like every other request. And then forestry can, because again, everybody uses 3-1-1. We've gotten into the habit of it. And except for the BGE traffic lights or streetlights, we use 3-1-1 for everything, right? So I think that, that's a great suggestion.
3-1-1, Madam CAO?
Did it already run out of battery? Oh, my God.
As I said last evening, that's God speaking to you.
Yes, it is, still from last night. Yes, absolutely. I'm actually checking 3-1-1 now just to see which tree requests are currently in 3-1-1. But we'll absolutely work with B-SIT and work with BCRP to ensure that we get this set up in 3-1-1. Uh, thank you. Are we doing one or two questions? Mr. Chair? Thank you. So I'm going to turn to parks now. We have been doing pretty well on some of our park maintenance work. I'm very curious about some of the outstanding capital requests that I have, and I'm sure my colleagues have, in terms of why it's taking so long for the pillars at Clifton Park, for instance. And also the fact that we can't seem to get the Wyman Park lights working. And that, I think, is indicative of a larger issue relative to procurement, getting projects done. So we can have a conversation about that. So playgrounds is a separate subject. I'll talk about that in a different question. I'm just talking about these infrastructure pieces that we've been asking for in my, these two parks that I have. But I think it's probably something indicative of some other things happening across the city. And I think it's a procurement issue, but I'm not sure.
Adam, you want to take the, if you'll take the question about the pillars?
Update on the pillars, is that what we're at? So this really stems from our current bidding process, which everything is on paper. People come and drop off their bids, then they're subject to review. In the case of this one, we got two bids. The first one was under review for three to four weeks. It was found to be non-compliant. Then we move on to the second one, again, another three weeks. They were found to be non-compliant. Both bidders are offered the opportunity to cure their bids, in which case the first one did not. The second one has, again, the time, clock's still ticking. At this point, I now have the second bid that is approved, but it's an additional $150,000 above the low bid. I'm now in the process of shuffling things around to be able to afford that. So that's where we're at right now.
So it sounds to me, we're still using paper for this process in wrecking parks? Or just is this is a procurement issue across the agencies, which I think is across the board?
City as a whole, this is something I've been talking to MoD about. We need to hit with the times and be electronic and not allow non-compliant bids to be submitted in the first place.
Nobody's here from the procurement office?
Capital is not procurement. I want to stress that. That's, that's a totally different group that deals with capital. Can you, that's. Oh, somebody's in the, what?
Oh, sorry.
So I'm just trying to figure out who's supposed to do what. And if it's indicative of a larger city problem, it's, it's, I mean, it's capital, but it, you're taking bids, so it's procurement, right? Am I right?
Yes, everything, everything flows through the comp controls office. I believe Adam Manny from procurement is working to amend that. So his office would be receiving these types of bids. I think there's some efficiency there and some opportunities to streamline the whole process.
Yeah, just remind my colleagues and, and everybody in the room and the public that this has been a four-year process. This request was in four years ago for these pillars. And we still don't have them. This was before my time, and we still don't have them. So I would like to make a formal request that we figure out what's happening there and work with the new procurement office and anybody else doing capital to figure this out. Not just with the pillars, but I think it's just indicative of a larger issue. And then I had asked about the Wyman Park lights.
In regards to the Wyman Park lights, so currently we only have, unfortunately, we only have one electrician that's working on staff for us. We recently had our bucket truck go down for a while. So in that, during that time, we relied on some of our sister agencies to kind of assist us with those requests. We currently, maybe about two weeks ago, as of two weeks ago, we had about 134 light, 34 requests just specific to street lighting alone. That's not including the other lighting requests that we have inter-agency-wise. So since DGS has been able to assist us with renting a bucket truck, and since then, our electrician has been able to go out and complete some of the requests that were already in the queue. So they are being worked on along, you know, with our in-house electrician, along with some requests or assistance from other, from our sister agencies, excuse me.
Well, in this particular case, those lights keep going out. So it's not, it's, they're getting fixed and going out, getting fixed and going out. This seems like a larger issue that needs to be addressed.
It, and I agree with that. It's something that we've also been working on. We have been trying to get a certified electrician to come out, a third-party vendor to come out and assist us with that. Some of those, some of those attempts have been, have not been able to happen. Some have gotten to a certain point and they've come out and looked at a few things and not provide us with an estimate. But that is something that we are continuously working on.
So I don't understand why, and maybe we can do this at some point. But DOT has light, streetlight people, and they do all the pedestrian lights. And they actually frankly look exactly like the ones that are in the park. So why aren't we maybe just saying all lighting, all pedestrian lighting, including in parks, needs to be done by DOT and make sure that DOT has the resources to do that? I, I guess I don't understand why we're.
Yeah, why can't DOT do it?
Well, they are willing to assist us with it now. That's something that our facility maintenance team has been coordinating with them. But as far as the, we would need to have a larger conversation about DOT taking over all of the streetlight.
Councilman, what I would do is reach out to Dari to Johnson and see if there's, just like other agencies depending on our forest team to do, or if, if we can work out some kind of agreement to get more of her, she, you know, get more of the electrician to support us in the meantime. So I will definitely communicate with Dari Johnson. I'm pretty sure that DOT has always been supportive, so we can definitely do that.
Yeah, it's just a permanent fix needs to be fixed, like it just needs to be done. So thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll follow up. Thanks.
Thank you. Director, are we tracking rec center usage by age group?
Participate in each rec center?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
What data, what data are you able to share related to that?
I mean, we can, we can share with you attendance data at each of our rec centers. We're also able to break it down by age groups because we have Civil Rec. So Civil Rec is the software that we use for all of our rec centers. So we can provide that.
Got it. And then how do we determine the programming that occurs at each rec center?
So there's, there's several steps. One, we do leader-led programming. Each, each of our rec centers are responsible. The staff are providing at least two leader-led programs. But then also, we do vendor programming. And that gives our rec centers a chance to come to our vendor fairs where different small businesses come in and showcase what they have to offer in programming. And then the third part of that, in some cases, we'll do community charrettes around programming. So it's a three-pronged process, but the center directors dictate their programming.
Thank you. Moving to Solo Gibbs Park in Sharp Weden Hall. Each year, Wreckin Parks utilizes a portion of the park for paid parking for Ravens games. How much revenue do we generate from that?
I don't have that number here, but I can get that number to you.
Please, Tony, that'd be a request. I'll take the revenue from last season for each game, including the playoff games, broken down by game. Where does that revenue go? That revenue just goes in general fund?
No, sir, it goes back to support Solo Gibbs operations, their rec center operations.
So is there enhanced programming that occurs at the rec center? Are we supplementing or are we supplanting through the normal rec center operations?
I will yield that question to Ken to answer. The question's about the revenue generated from the parking for the Ravens games for Solo Gibbs.
Sorry. The funds, funds from Solo Gibbs are used directly to fund activities at Solo Gibbs. It's, it's in an account by itself, so it's not, it's not in any way encumbered with, with other funding. So Solo Gibbs, those, those funds are available to be used and spent for activities in Solo Gibbs.
So then?
We, we do have an account for it.
So the Solo Gibbs rec center must be getting enhanced programming above and beyond other rec centers because this additional pot of money is being used, correct?
I mean, the funding is there. It just depends on what, what recreation decides. That's a recreation question in terms of enhancement.
I'm not sure that answers my question. The, there is a pot of money that is generated from parking.
Yes, sir.
And that pot of money goes toward operations at the rec center, correct?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, uh-huh.
What I'm asking is, is there enhanced programming beyond what would normally be provided at Solo Gibbs or at our other rec center facilities?
So they have, they have access to the additional funds from the parking revenue to improve their programming or to offer more vendor programming. I think it's important to note that Solo Gibbs' physical footprint makes programming more limited. There's not a lot of actual physical space to bring different type of vendors. So the, the variety of programming that it can have is limited by their physical space. But they do have access to additional funds that the rest of the rec centers don't have access to. So they do have the opportunity for enhanced programming. But I think it is limited, one, by the physical footprint of the location. And then they, they do a good job of working with their young people to figure out what they want there. So they are able to offer more vendor programs if that's what the young people and the staff determine is desired.
So it's supplementing the program?
It's supplementing.
Not supplanting?
Correct.
No.
Okay.
And Councilman, I can just add on that too. The, the budget for Solo Gibbs does not actually include an assumption around revenue. So whatever revenue they bring in in that year, they're able to supplement what is reflected in the recurring budget for them.
Councilman, I want to yield to Karen, but then one of the things we have done is increased the hours of operations at Solo Gibbs. So Solo Gibbs, if you recall, used to be an after-school-only satellite. That center now is open until 1 o'clock Monday through Friday. No, geez, 1 o'clock. It opens and it closes at 9 o'clock Monday through Friday. So that's another thing we've been able to do because I think that was an ask of the community. 6 o'clock in the past, that center would close down after school. Now we are offering evening programs at Solo Gibbs.
Okay. So that rec center is going to be open tonight till 9?
That rec center should be open to 9 o'clock tonight, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to drive by there.
All right, sir.
Thank you. And then you'll get me a, you'll get me a itemized list of the amount of revenue that we brought in last year. And I assume that that revenue is not used for restoration of the field that is damaged from the parking. Because every year, we have issues with special events at the park because of wear and tear from the parking that occurred in the fall. So spring always gets off to a late start for permitted activities at the park. Is that correct, that this additional funding is not used to make repairs?
I will yield to it, but my initial answer is going to be, we don't use park maintenance funding to, to support Solo Gibbs. And I will say, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're hoping this fall that that phase one goes on, on the construction. So this possibly could have been the last year of parking at the Ravens field. Because if you recall, once that improvement starts, there will be no more parking on, in that area.
Phase, phase one's going to start this year?
Is it, Adam? Let me confirm that. He will confirm, but once phase one starts, there will not be any more parking on that site.
Very good. I'm going to wait for Adam and then I'll jump. Or do you need a couple minutes, Adam? So I shouldn't wait. You're usually very quick. Thank you.
We'll, we'll get your answer though, before.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do we have personnel dedicated to or a budget dedicated to or a clear path to maintaining paved trails in our parks? We have two places that I've reported in the portion of Herring Run Park in my district. I've experienced where the pavement has.
I've experienced where the pavement has poorly filled sunken holes in the pathway. Both of them, one side of the part of the, of Herring Run, one side of the water, the south side, one on the north side, both about halfway between Harford Road and Bel Air Road. They've been there for years. They need to be patched properly, so it's not just a crappy sunken hole with some asphalt thrown into it. There are places over in Leiken Park that I've been riding over for years and years and years on my bike, where we have root bumps running across the path, which really suck to ride across on a bike and are a tripping hazard for runners and walkers. And they've been there for years. And when I've asked in the past, I mean, I've clearly asked about getting these, these patches made in Herring Run, but I don't really understand who's supposed to fix these, if not Wreckin Parks. And I've gotten kind of weird responses, like maybe we can get DOT to help out with that in the past, because DOT has pavement contracting and in-house pavement stuff. But it's not DOT property. And so I don't know that we have any clearer system for getting these things fixed, do we?
So I can answer your question. We have two dedicated trail manager positions that we have funded, that their job is to focus on trails. We don't have a dedicated budget for trails. It's part of the overall park maintenance budget that is there to support trails, as well as all the other many different needs that's in that park maintenance or that park district. What we tend to ask our sister agency at DOT is because they do have paving contractors. At times, can they come and help and support us in those cases? If it's a large, if it's a big enough job where we have to do some kind of renovation or major construction, then we'll have to, we actually get a contract to come in, engineer that, that improvement, and then we bid that project out. What we've recently done is we partner with Parks and People, some funding that we was able to secure with the state, that we have been able to improve some of the trail sections of the Lower Gwens Falls. But it is, is something where we continue to utilize our resources, but it's not a large amount of resources that is just dedicated to trails. But I think our first step was, a couple of years ago, we didn't even have dedicated personnel to the trails. Now we at least have dedicated personnel that has equipment, that are, that are on the trails every day, that are maintaining the trails. And then they're also able to report what's happening. Also, our rangers, when they're doing their walks in, in the parks, they're, they're able to file reports if they find things as well.
Okay, but I've reported these things as well. It didn't take a ranger or a trail manager to report these things. We know that these problems exist despite those positions only being more recently established. We know that these things are, exist. What I'm hearing is we don't have in-house personnel to go out there and do asphalt paving. We don't have, we don't have a Wreckin Parks contract for asphalt repaving. What I need to hear is, what is it gonna take for us to either get a contract to do that ourselves, Wreckin Parks, or get DOT to actually come and do it? Because these, these conditions have existed for years and need to be remedied. And they're not long, huge pavement things. Like, it's not like we're asking to repave a street, which DOT does plentifully each year. It's, I need a four-foot by four-foot patch made in some asphalt by somebody going out there with a saw and cutting out a poorly patched thing and put in, with appropriate materials and equipment, a good patch. And, you know, I need two four-foot by four-foot patches. And over in Leiken Park, you know, we might need six root bumps addressed in the paving that are all within five feet of one another. So we're talking about like incredibly, incredibly small areas that have existed for years. What do, I don't understand the path to get that done. Because I don't want to be here with these problems next year, or six months, or three months from now. I think that they've existed long enough and they need to get fixed.
So to answer your question, Ed, are we familiar with the service requests? We need to get our team to go out and assess. I think the second step that we're working, since Wreckin Parks is ultimately responsible for maintaining all of their spaces and their buildings, is we're working with procurement to either piggyback off of some of DGS own calls or us creating our own independent contractors that we can do various different services beyond just paving, if it comes to plumbing, HVAC. So we are in the process of doing that. Because we have other paving needs, it will probably be in our best interest to try to get an on-call that we can directly communicate with service requests when we need improvement. So my commitment to you is to get our team to go out, assess this, and then determine. The quickest solution would be if DOT has on calls. If we can get one of their own calls to go out, to give us a quote to fix these trail areas, and then us work through our sister agency's contract to get them to do that. That's, that would be the approach that we will take for the immediate need to get this done.
Can you give me a sense of a timeline for turnaround?
I can give you a better sense of a timeline once I can talk to our sister agency to get their, their on-call to come out to at least tell us how quick they can get it done. I don't want to tell you we can get this done in a week and then they, they can't get out for two weeks to at least give us an estimate. But I do understand your frustration and will, I can commit to you that we will, we will get this addressed ASAP. And I can follow up.
Okay, I don't...
So, council member, we can submit that to you in writing. So what we can do is connect with DGS, connect with the contractor. So if you give us to at least next Friday, we will send you in writing the feedback that we get from the contractor around the time it will take for us to go out and make this repair.
Okay. We, so, we still have to go out and inspect the things that I reported a year ago, or we've known were there for like years?
I think it's also important to kind of just highlight that our addition of the trail managers was a new position. And we've also had some turnover in those things. So if you can imagine, we have, you know, hundreds of miles of trails with no dedicated staff to us. We've made progress under this administration to get those positions. So I think it's appropriate to give them some time to familiarize themselves with the trails, to prioritize the issues. I understand those two that you highlighted are important. I can, I can gather there's many more issues that they've highlighted. And we have turnover, so right now we have interviews slated to refill those positions again, so not that...
So, okay. So, I guess I want to know how, other than trusting that your trail managers are reporting a problem and that... Because I don't trust that the average DOT person who goes around picking up downed streetlights is also just making observations as they go around and going, "Oh, look, there's another streetlight that got knocked down a year ago that hasn't been put back up yet. Let me make a request to get that streetlight put back up." I don't trust that somebody is just like reporting everything that needs to be fixed. I trust that when I report something, it's going to get investigated. But I need to know what the average person's means to reporting a problem with a city parks paved, or I would say constructed trail problem is, right? Because there was also problems with bridges in Leiken Park for years that were really unsafely and poorly kind of like temporarily patched for a very long time. I want to know what it's gonna take. I need a system for the average person, or for the average city council member, to, through a reliable system.
Yeah, so I think we spoke earlier about ensuring that our service requests go into the 3-1-1 system. So perhaps there are some conversations we need to implore to figure out if trails is a specific 3-1-1 request. So I think that we and the team also want to be able to have access to what SRS are outstanding and to understand and to be able to track the work. But I just want to highlight again, we came from having nobody who was dedicated to it, to us trying to stand up a program. And we have had turnover over the last year and a half in those positions. So it is going to take us time to deliver the system that you require. But I think CA Leach just committed to at least giving you, by next Friday, some information about the two issues that you highlighted. And we can continue, once we have people on staff, working with Ed and his team, to figure out what is a strategy for keeping real data about our concerns in SRS that we received about trails, and then creating some metrics to determine how we can have great service delivery. So we are building it from it not existing. So I do want to acknowledge that the system for trail maintenance did not exist. And we have heard the council's request about it, which is why we got the support of the administration for the position. So we are making progress in this effort. But we are in the very infancy of the trail management program. So this is gonna require some additional patience and coordination with our sister agencies, making sure our contracts are in place. So we envision that the next time or before you, we'll have a more concrete update on the trail maintenance program. One of our first milestones is having employees to do the evaluation and to give us some feedback. And also, yeah, so we're, we're building the program, but I think it's reasonable to put some parameters for us to report back to you all about our progress.
Councilman, you want to, does that sufficiently encapsulate the requests that you'd want to get answered from the agency? Is there anything else you're missing?
I want to make sure that I'm being clear. The 3-1-1 system has a park maintenance, a general parks maintenance service request type. I don't believe that that's sufficient. I think that there needs to be a trail maintenance service request number in the 3-1-1 system. And that among its dropdowns needs to have a question for whether this is a paved trail or an unpaved trail, because you're gonna find a whole different kind of routing that needs to happen to triage or send to the right people. You know, one person, you're responding with a chainsaw. The other person, you're responding with a pavement cutter and asphalt, right? These are two different types of responses for two different kinds of trails. And it just makes very basic logical sense for there to be the ability to report these things very directly. Every park maintenance 3-1-1 request I feel like I've ever made has just gone into a black hole. I just, I don't know.
So I think we have the commitment of the administration that we'll work with BSC to figure out what additional 3-1-1, 3-1-1 service requests we need for the agency. So today I've heard two, one about forestry and now this additional one about trail maintenance. So I think that's something that we can work with the administration and BSC to have added to our 3-1-1 system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Moore, and to your entire team. I want to begin by just thanking you and Mayor Scott for getting all six of the park pools open this summer. It's a big deal. And I appreciate the commitments that you all made and the work with our office and all the council offices. And I think it's just good to see our families enjoying our pools. So thank you for that. And I also want to thank you and Jacia and the whole team for the work around implementing trauma-informed care. I know that's been something that you are deeply passionate about and is part of your dissertation and your leadership. And I, I heard nothing but great things from the Sage Wellness Team about working with you all. And I think it sets Wreckin Park up to really be a national leader in this area. So again, I thank you both for how seriously you took that and just you showing up. That means a lot. So I want to ask first about Central Park, which is over in O'Donnell Heights. As you are probably aware, O'Donnell Heights is going through a significant redevelopment. We have been able to obtain a pretty significant portion of state funding. Some, some Mayor's ARPA money went into it. It is, you know, just like Perkins Homes, it's old, beaten-down, World War II-era public housing and badly needed redevelopment. And we're glad to say that Key's Point has been moving forward. But one of the real challenges for that area is there's not enough green space. There's that big field over there. But part of the plan is to transform it into a park known as Central Park. I've heard that there's, I don't know if it's hesitancy or what, but it, it seems like there are some challenges and that the park is starting to become a choke point for the project. And so I just wanted to get a commitment from you and make sure that we are moving forward full steam ahead. Because what I am concerned about is, I know District 46 secured some state funds for that project. And if we're not able to move forward, I think we're in jeopardy of losing those funds. And I do not want to see this project stalled out. It is just as important to me and to the residents that live over there as PSO and all the other good redevelopment projects that are happening in the city.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I'll just respond by, yeah, we're thankful for District 46. They were able to secure enough funding to do some design work. The problem that we, we're all struggling with is where is the capital funding coming from? And as you all know, we're really wanting to see the completion of this comprehensive strategy because we have many, many needs in our city. And one of the things that I have been speaking with Parks and People is going to take the lead in doing the design work. And I think that work, I believe we're close to really getting that done, as far as getting that work started. And I think that's the first step. Let's, let's do the conceptual, let's do the design. And then the question we've been asking Housing is, what is our joint strategy around funding? We, as you know, the, geez, I can't think of the, the North Central Park, that funding was, it was funded majority by Housing. And yes, the park that we're receiving. And so what we've been asking Housing is this, is there an opportunity for a similar agreement with that funding or some form of joint agreement? But the early estimates is that's about like a $5 million project. And as you know, if you look at our capital funding, we average about $7 to $9 million a year to commit that kind of money to one project, then what happens to all the other many needs? So while our agency is committed to supporting and helping try to move that project along, it, it's gonna come down to how we resource and how we fund that project to get it to execution and construction. But we are at least starting the process with working with Parks and People to start the design of the, of the park, to know what kind of funding we're looking at long-term to construct the park.
No, and, and I can appreciate that. I, I just know that, you know, this whole Keys Point, it's been a lot of fits and starts. As you know, my office has leaned in heavily. We've built a lot of goodwill between O'Donnell Heights and Graceland Park and St. Helena and all the neighborhoods that we're having challenges with each other over there. And one of the areas of real consensus is we need green space, we need a park for our kids. I would just really hate to see this project stall out if we are unable to obtain funds. And like I said, it feels like a little bit of a chicken and egg, or, you know, this piece has to fit here and that piece there. But what I've been told is the project is, we are in danger of losing our state funding if we do not secure funding for the park. Which I, I understand the complexity of, of, of the capital side, but it, and we're not talking, it's not a huge parcel. And so I, I would think we'd be able to get there.
I, I understand, Councilman Cohen. And I think even in this case, this, this project may be in phases. And I, I think the first part of this phase is we need to get the design work started. We, we don't, we don't know what this park involves. I mean, yes, I went through our initial number of $5 million, but there's been a real high-level conceptual strategy that was done like five or six years ago. And that's where they got that $5 million number from. But there was a lot of elaborate things in this park. And so if the community needs green space, maybe Phase 1 is that we provide a really nice green space so kids can play and run and have fun with additional phases, even if you can't get that full park funded at one time. So I think what I can say is our agency is willing to sit and continue to work with the Housing Department. We'll continue to work with Parks and People. But until we get the planning done, I, I think we're, we're, we're just spinning our wheels until we know exactly what's this cost and what is considered, what needs to be done in Phase 1, and maybe we come back with a Phase 2 strategy. So I think, I think for us, it is, let's continue to push the envelope. I know Parks and People are ready to start this, this, the plan, the design work. And I think that's, that's what we need to be doing now, is let's, let's hear from the community, see what they want, and then work with our consultants to design a, a plan and a, and a path forward. And us working with Parks and People, working with the housing, as well as maybe seeing if there's some support back at the state level that can help us with some additional capital if, if needed on this project. But I, I think your initial question is, is the agency committed? But, I think your initial question is, is the agency committed, we're committed to continue to move forward with the planning process to, to better develop a long-term strategy and plan on how we get to the finish line? But, no planning, we can't do anything until we get the planning done.
No, I appreciate that. I would just say that, you know, I think we're pretty clear on what the community wants and they want a park and they want to redevelop, they want the housing to be redeveloped. I mean, we've had so many charrettes, so many public conversations about this. My office has literally convened groups of neighbors for the last, I don't know, six years, at least monthly. I just feel like there have been commitments made around this project and time and time again, folks feel like commitments are not delivered in any kind of reasonable timeframe. And so, what I'm asking from your office is a real commitment to push into this. And I hear you on the design piece and working with Parks and People and I think it's really important. But, you know, again, if we lose our state funding, I would just be profoundly disappointed because this project deserves the same amount of attention as any other redevelopment of public housing in our city because O'Donnell Heights is in rough shape. I'll leave it there, but I am hoping that we can talk offline after this. Second question is about the policy around bags in the pools. I've heard a lot of concern from community, really just across the city, I mean Patterson Park, but also pretty much most of parks, there seems to be a lot of concern, particularly among parents who are bringing their kids, have, you know, bags, have stuff that they're bringing with them. And, you know, again, as an agency which is really, I think, leading around being trauma-informed, I wanted to understand both the purpose of this policy and whether we are incorporating some of the feedback that I know I'm hearing quite a bit of and I know you are as well into how we're thinking about it.
Yes, sir. So, I want to start by saying the bag policy is not new. This bag policy has been in place for many years. In my opening statement, one of the things I spoke about is Nikki Cobb has been the head of Aquatics, this is her second year. And one of the things she did is she looked across the board this past year at some of her leadership in some of her pools. There has been changes in most of these pools in leadership. And one thing she has been stressing to her team is consistency, enforcing the rules because our, one of the, the lifeguard's job is to keep everyone safe. And I can tell you, being out on that pool deck the last two weekends, and I think, I'm not sure if you saw or heard in the beginning, we've seen over 10,000 people in the first two weekends and five days of our pool operation, which really tells us it's going to be a really, as long as the weather continues to be the way it is, it's going to be a really busy season. So, the bag policy is there to keep everyone safe. And I hear the concerns of participants, but one of the things I also did was I did research of other urban park pool systems to see, are we missing the boat here? And if you go look at DC, if you look at Philly, they have the similar rules, no bags on their deck. One of the things that we have made exceptions to, if someone comes and says they have a medical condition, that they need their medical medicine or whatever near them, they have made that exception. We have gone an additional step because one thing our lifeguards are doing is they're patrolling the pool decks, right? And so, if they see a bag, naturally they're going to think because sometimes people will sneak bags underneath their towels and they'll say, hey, you gotta, you know, remove your bag. So, to help expand on that communication, we are buying net bags that if you have a medical bag, you drop that, that medical bag inside that net bag. And then it's clearly distinguished by our lifeguards that that bag is approved to be on the deck. So, we're, we're making accommodations, but one of the things we don't want to do is make accommodations to the point that we now potentially start jeopardizing the safety and the security of our staff and our patrons. And as you stated, our staff are trauma-informed and I can just tell you some of the experiences our young people are experiencing at our pools. I mean, we got to make sure that we're protecting our staff too in those cases. So, we hear the community, we are looking at if there's things that we can, we can modify, but without jeopardizing the safety, the security, the systems and the operations of our pools. And one additional step with the support of administrations, we're going to start, we're about to start having feedback at the pools on the weekends. So, you're going to have QR codes. We want to hear from the community, you know, how was your experience at our pool? So that we can monitor that as well, so that we can continue to strengthen and improve our facilities. But, we have a lot of young people that are doing an amazing job and we don't want to see our young people be, lose interest because of bad experiences or things that they're having to do. And their simple, their job is to save lives and keep everybody safe. So, at this point in time, this is our reasons for the safety and the security of our patrons and our staff, we have a bag policy. But, I want to say this bag policy is not new, but due to the change in leadership at our pools, one of the things the new aquatics leadership is stressing is consistency, enforcing our rules, where maybe that has not been done in the past.
No, listen, I can appreciate the need for consistency and certainly very grateful to some of the lifeguards that I've gotten to interact with. You know, it's been awesome to see so many young people engaging in that kind of way. Can you walk me through, because I don't know that I'm conceptually understanding it and I don't mean to be obtuse, but the safety threat that having a bag presents at a pool, that it doesn't present at a park, that it doesn't present in any other public space, rec center?
So, we have bag policies in our gymnasiums as well, right? So, bags historically, right, you can have weapons or things that would be, make the environment not safe. So, one of the things that you mentioned, I think, was a good lead-in about us being trauma-informed. That means that we are listening to our staff as well. A lot of our aquatics team have been there for numerous years and have seen the pools come into a space where they feel much more safe, right? We have the, we have security at our pool for safety reasons, right? If you think about, it's heat, it's a good time, but conflicts arise. So, our practices are also inside of our buildings as well. So, you can't just have a backpack walking around the rec center too. So, we do have lockers that we encourage people to use at pools and on our rec centers so that we can make sure that everyone is safe. So, what bags do is they do allow you to have things that are not conducive to a healthy swim environment. So, it could be glass bottles in bags, it could be weapons in bags. There are things that are not in line with us making sure that we have a clear sight of the pool and that we can mitigate and watch things as they're happening. So, it's important to note too, at the pools, there are lockers, right? So, we're not asking people to come in with their, you know, their suntan lotion just in their hands. There are spaces for people to store their items and we have made the additional, I would say, change based on the feedback from the last two weeks of adding the net bag so that we can eliminate confusion for our team, right? If you see the net bag, that means that bag has come through the process and is cleared to be there. So, our main goal is to have a safe summer, both through water safety and just through communication and interactions amongst young people and people in general. So, our teams, and I would encourage anybody to come one week into some of our pools to see what those young people are managing and they're managing it well. They're de-escalating, they are using the skills that they have, they're taking mindfulness moments, they are making sure that they have a good summer. But, the bag policy, because it's not new, we have seen success in it. In those pools where we were consistent, there were less incidents. So, we want to make sure that we have a consistent experience, whether you're at Riverside or Patterson. We want the experience to be same for everybody. So, what we are doing, Director Moore just alluded to, is having some QR codes because again, we are agile, we want to continue to get feedback, right? And in this last two weeks, we've had the addition of the net bags. That wasn't something that we've had. So, we want to continue to hear from our users about what's working, what's not working. We'll continue to make adjustments throughout the season, but the bag policy is one that we've seen successful both inside of our pools and our rec center. So, at this point, there doesn't seem the impetus to make any adjustments besides the ones we indicated earlier to make sure people have access to their medical needs.
Again, I appreciate the need for consistency. I'm also hearing from many parents that are concerned because if they have to run and go get their bag, they have to leave their kids, you know, think about someone who's taking the bus to go to the pool. I struggle to see why a bag is a problem in a pool, but not in a park. But, you know, I look forward to the QR codes and the feedback that you all receive. And once again, I want to thank this agency for really aggressively moving to getting our pools open this summer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Burnett. Good to see you all. So, I'd second that. What we said, there are no pools in the eighth. My constituents obviously do use the ones nearby. The thing I was first looking for an update on, as you're very much aware, Madam Chief of Staff, the, we had a really serious incident in the park, Lincoln Park, a few months ago related to an assault. And sort of, a lot of stuff sort of came out of that around a, you know, homeless encampment, a lot of concerns about park maintenance generally. But, the one piece that I think sort of came out in the community meeting that we held at the Cahill Rec Center was concerns just broadly about like emergency communications between your agency, within the agency and between law enforcement and staff in the park. And just to lift up that, you know, one of the things that came out of it was that like the students, the staff at the Kerry Mary Nature Center weren't aware that there was this like large manhunt going on in real time. And part of that was communication with BPD to the center and to your office and vice versa. Can you speak to where things stand now, lessons learned from that incident and how we can expect moving forward a more robust communication network when there are very serious incidents, not only in this particular park, but in parks across the city?
Yes, thank you for that question. So, one of the things that is an immediate improvement is that we are fully staffed, our ranger program that had gone dormant for a while, but we have a supervisor and we have rangers in place. So, their ability to move throughout our system and to make contact with different users, different staff members has been increased. The Chief of Risk and Safety, Dorsey Skinner, who's here with us today, so his team of the rangers, they are much more, I guess, aware of the different incidences as they are happening throughout the agency. They complete daily reporting about what they've heard, what they've seen. That's funnel back up to the administration. And we also have our critical incident team, which was a result of trauma-informed care. So, when there is an incident amongst staff that impacts staff, that there is a convergence of leadership teams and we try to think through who needs to be notified, what we need to work with the administration through. So, I think what we've learned from the incident there and then also just internally through the work that we're doing through trauma-informed care and just the agency growing in REC 2025 is that communication is something that we need to lean into. We have different newsletters that we've employed just so people have awareness about events because sometimes I didn't know 2,000 people were going to come to the park today. So, having more communication internally about events that are happening. We have our internet page, which each division is now currently working on putting information, they can do it in real time and then deploy it out to the agency. So, I think over the last year, we've made very intentional strides in working on internal communication. And Chief Skinner, along with his connections and cooperation with BPD, so there's much more contact between them, between what's happening at Shake and Bake, if there's an incident at the pool. I think we're just much more intentional to make sure that we are closing the communication loop. And then the charge for our senior leadership team that I have is who should be at this meeting, who's not, right? So, we are taking those intentional pauses to figure out who should be at the table while we are thinking through events, while we are planning for summer. So, we've been doing a really good job of even working with the administration on the summer youth engagement to make sure we're having two weekly meetings to talk about how the weekend went and then the plan for the upcoming weekend. So, I think that our frequency of communication has increased as well as the different modes that we're using to communicate from teams and text messages and newsletters. So, I think that we have a better internal flow. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. Do I think it is remarkably improved? Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as a similar follow-up, because you mentioned the rangers. One, and it's not implying that this is a ranger job, but one of the sort of ongoing issues that we've been dealing with and I'll just keep it to Gwynn Falls, Lincoln Park because it's my district, but it's obviously a citywide issue, is known locations of illegal dumping and trash and sort of a more proactive response. I will note, the last time I rode down Purnell Drive, it actually looked pretty good. And I was like, wow, this has been a long time coming here. So, it felt like something was happening. And so, I wanted to see where we stand with that, with that piece as well. And I know the rangers sort of fit into that because a lot of times, they may be the first eyes and ears on the scene, but we do know that there are certain spots that are just like repetitive dumping areas.
Yeah, that's, thank you, Councilman Burnett. Yeah, one of the things I will say is, as the Chief of Staff spoke earlier, is that the rangers do daily reports. And when, and they're going to our larger pools, like I said, we still have five, but we're grateful for those five. But, some of those illegal dumping sites, if they come up on a dumping site, they're not leaving it, they're addressing it. If they can get it and they can clean themselves, then they're doing it. And I think I just got a recent report where I think there was a 15, 16 illegal dumping sites that they've recently cleaned. Also, they discovered roughly about 10 homeless encampments. So, I think the rangers being in parks, the rangers being more engaged, that's one part. Our park maintenance team is working with our sister agency at DPW. And then if there is a continuous known site, then we'll, we try to work with DACD and see if there's an opportunity where we can bring a camera so we can try to figure out who is doing that dumping. So, I think with all of those different collaborations, it is hopefully helping us to improve some of those sites that we normally have known have been hotspots for dumping.
And also, just one additional, we also have some of our team members who are dedicated to illegal dumping. So, that's led by one of our team members, Jackie Paynell. So, when the city has a coordinated effort between agencies to do illegal dumping or when we get a call about illegal dumping, we do have a staff whose focus is to remediate and address that illegal dumping. And also, the park rangers, so our leader there, Michael, he has done a good job of not just asking his team to tag the trash if it's there to actually remove it. So, hopefully, you'll see continued improvement in that.
Got it. Thank you. I just had one agency request, Madam Chair, if that was okay, or information request?
Go ahead.
Could I get a status update on the construction at Mary Rodman Rec Center, like sort of where we currently stand and where we're headed with that? Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. I'm holding up until the chair returns. I guess I want to get first, just thank you and your department for allowing the space for the wonderful library that's going, new library that's going to be taking place in Park Heights. And the first new library in 17, 18 years in the entire city and close to 30 years in that community. So, I appreciate you making plans to adding that space on that CC Jackson campus. And I think one of the holdups really of this, just working for, through this whole project and for the administration to take note in future planning and with things like this in the city, is that some, an agency really has to outright be designated as the lead because that seems to be, that seems to have been conversations in sub-cabinet meetings and just different things. Who is going to take the lead on partnership projects such as this? But, I really thank you and your team for working to get that space. It's taken many years to get this far and we just went through the plan, approved planning commission for the wonderful allowable parking that's needed in that area based on that whole campus anyway. So, it's just going to be a double, you know, positive thing that's going to be happening. And I want you to make note that July 2nd is now when it's planned to come back to the council for final approval and hopefully we'll be having a wonderful groundbreaking before the summer is over. Did you want to comment any about that space and your role in the project?
All I'll say, Councilwoman, is that our agency has been keenly focused on collaboration and partnerships. And we have an amazing relationship with Enoch Pratt Library and we're talking about some other projects that we can do in collaboration. But, our team, Kate Brower, has led our charge in making sure the synergy takes place because there's development that we will be doing as well because we're going to improve the park space that's around it, that's going to connect and we're going to add a parking space that we're going to share with the library. And so, I'm thankful for that collaboration partnership with the library and we're looking, we look forward to them both being coexisting on the same site before Hadi left and even before Hadi left and even now with Darcelle as the interim. One of the things we continuously talk about is how we can overlap our opportunities in our program. Is there opportunities that instead of us bringing in a STEM coordinator at C.C. Jackson, maybe they bring in a STEM coordinator to do that program? So I'm just thankful for the partnership and look forward to that facility being built and continue to improve opportunities in Park Heights.
And then a shout out to the person that handles your recreation for seniors. She has been a true partner with the Commission of Aging as well and, you know, helping to keep information out through that avenue as well as, you know, still working with older adult facilities and so on. So I haven't heard any problems thus far with, you know, what's going on with, and the things that you do for older adults. And keep that yearly, I guess, luncheon that you have. I kind of had my first senior symposium as well this year that I'm going to, it was so positive that I'm going to continue to have that every year as well. And it was very well attended by agents, you know, other agencies as well. But the event that you give annually is just, they love it. And of course, love the lunch and the giveaways as well. So on that note, does any other council members have any questions? We'll start with Councilwoman Ramos and then Councilman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is a question for finance. She just walked out, so I'll wait till she gets back. There she is. Okay. I'm sorry about that. In the rec and parks budget in a couple of different places, there is revenues listed from table games. And could you describe, I believe this is part of the deal that occurred with Pimlico and the casino. My question is about, I think throughout the budget process, we've been clear, or that your office has been clear, that we're really putting in here actual money that we know about. So the table games money, that is money we know is coming. It's not something that we're predicting for next fiscal year, correct?
That is, that is correct. And the amounts that are reflected from the gaming revenue are guided by the two board, the two community boards that provide funding recommendations about how those dollars can be spent. So we do, in the executive summary and the preliminary budget, as well as the summary of the adopted, we do include a section where we describe where the gaming revenue is being budgeted in the operating and capital budgets in the revenue section. So if you're looking at the executive summary on pages 52 and 53, you can see both for operating and capital, where both the Baltimore casino dollars are reflected as well as the Pimlico impact aid.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. I will take a look at that. That's great. Thank you. And I was just wanting to make sure we were, I was just asking about a consistency question. So I appreciate that. That's really great detail in the executive summary. My second question is around the rangers. Super happy that this is happening. Can we get the list and contact information for each of the rangers that are in our districts so that we can have contact with them? I have very specific issues that are happening in Stony Run that I need some assistance with. You can imagine what those are. And, and also just for us to, you know, have that relationship so that we can also support them. If they're seeing something happening in the parks that they're like, this is a problem and I need some help, we can be helpful.
Yes, ma'am, Councilwoman. We can definitely share that with the entire council, the leadership of the rangers. I think what I would strongly suggest is that we give you Dorsey Skinner, who's the Chief of Risk, and our ranger supervisor, Michael. In that way, because Michael's the one who kind of assigns the ranges to the different districts and then maybe we can do a setup of a meeting where he can meet you out in the park one day and they can formally introduce themselves.
That sounds, that sounds great. And then related to that, Stony Run is shared between 14 and 6. Herring Run is shared between 14, 3, and 2, and a little bit of 13. And so I'm imagining you're, they're organized where there would be one ranger per council. It's not like there's two different rangers for Stony Run, for instance, right?
Well, just to be honest, our ranger's not fully just assigned to a district. They're assigned to patrol different parks because our--
So they don't, okay, gotcha.
We technically only have five. So we don't have a big enough resource, you know, force to assign to districts. So our biggest focus right now has been on the bigger, larger parks with some attention and some are smaller parks, but they're touching on larger parks every day of the city.
Yeah, it makes sense to organize it by park or park district and not council district. That totally makes sense. But I do think that, for instance, Stony Run probably has one and Councilwoman and I should have their contact information to, to work with them. This is my point.
No, I don't oppose that. We can definitely get you that information.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. I have a couple others, but I'll yield to my colleague.
Good, okay. Before Councilman Burnett, you had mentioned Stony Run. What about the Jones Falls Trail? Is that kind of included as well? That's a very long trail that leads all the way to downtown.
So our Jones Falls Trails, we depend more on our trail managers to kind of patrol that, not patrol the area, but at least look for the maintenance if they see some issues. But to add the trails to the rangers right now, that will probably extend them way beyond their capacity. So we just depend on our trail managers to assess and tell us if they see issues.
Understood. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you. The first question I had was just more on, both of them are like around youth program or youth, uh, resources. The first, so can we talk about how, I know that the agency has been undergoing, you know, sort of a re-imagination of like youth programming and the things that are offered in rec centers. I know I have family in Howard County and they have a very robust sort of like summer camps and stuff ongoing that's sort of beyond just sports. Can you speak to the agency's efforts to sort of grow the opportunities for our young people that may not necessarily be interested in sports activities, but other activities in our rec centers, you know, during the school year and in the summer months?
So thank you for that question. I will tell you, we are the first agency in the entire state of Maryland to open up an esports facility. That is really getting our young people, a lot of our young people are into gaming. And so we opened up the Medfield site. That's one opportunity for our young people. We're going to continue to grow on that. The other big piece is that we have eight STEM sites throughout the city, which is teaching the STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and art, as another opportunity for program and growth. And then what we've also expanded on is teens are, play a vital role and as a large population. So we've hired our own team coordinator that strictly focuses on team programming. But within that team coordinator, we've identified five teen centers around the city. And what that means and what that strategy was, is we had the teens that come in, the rec centers, that we see a large teen population, and they was able to really kind of create their own space, their own room that they can call home. Some things we've noticed with teens is they like structure. Sometimes they just want to hang out with friends and have a cool space, safe space that they can be in. So those are some of the strategies we're doing. From an athletic standpoint, we're growing our middle school sports programming as well as we continue to grow our youth football programming. We're offering basketball multiple times a year when it comes to athletics. Trying to think if there's some additional things we want to highlight with youth that we're doing.
Yeah, so one of the things that the Sky Administration has been very intentional about is youth. We are proud to be partnering with the administration on a summer youth engagement strategy that we started or kicked it off on Easter with a first time, not a kiddie disco, but a teen disco. So what we're doing in that space is that we are actually going into schools. One of our partners, Noel, who's with the mayor's office, she has done a really good job of going to where the young people are to understand from them what it is that they want. So summer's usually a great time for us to connect with youth and to figure out what we should be doing in the, in the off season. So over the summer, we're continuing to have conversations with young people to figure out what it is that they need. I think last summer, when we started off with our teen parties and those teen engagements, people are starting to look at recreation and city stuff as cool again, right? So we had a really successful last summer. We started this spring with the Easter event and we had our first kickoff at Rashfield over the holiday weekend. So we know that young people are starting to see city offerings as a real place to go and connect. So what we need to do with the hiring of our teen coordinators to grow on that. So our teen coordinator, Shaleek, who just joined us, he was down here in City Hall with you, with you guys. But Shaleek is there now. He has a lot of experience in engaging with young people where they are. So what we anticipate is that we will continue to grow on the strides we've made over the last two years. We know that we have a real need to focus on teenage girls. We, our data that we've been collecting through our rec stat and through our civic rec, we indicate something is happening. After 12 years old, we don't really know exactly where the girls are going. So I know that the rec center team, they are looking into that and are thinking about like reintroducing Double Dutch as a culture. So when I was younger, teenage girls, Double Dutch. So what you should anticipate is that as we continue to grow out the program, again, Shaleek has been with us for 30 days. So he'll get his first experience in summer in connecting and making those connections. What we do know about young people is that they want trusted adults. It is the trusted adults that they cling to and they'll follow you across the city. So when we think about hiring our young people and making sure that our young people who are working in our rec centers, one, have an ear for young people, that they are listening to them, that they are understanding what resources that they are. And then we're actually bringing them to the table in the conversation around what they want. With the teen spaces, we allow them to pick from the paint color to the chairs, to the gaming systems that they had in those rooms. So we see that growing out. But I think what we need to do in this first year with Shaleek being with us is to really understand and hear from our youth. Apart from Rec 2025, we have youth councils that have kind of gone dormant. So we need to re-engage our youth councils and get those started again to figure out what young people want. What we do know is they don't like to be told what to do. They like to have some input in what fun looks like for them. So we, you'll see increased engagement with young people to understand what they want. And then you'll see responsive programming. So once we hear from them, there's a communication loop. You said you want a Double Dutch, we brought it. You said you want to eat gaming, we brought it. So you'll see us growing into young people, but then also having employment for them. So, you know, the mayor's office of economic development are starting their year-round youth works. We're interested in working with them to figure out how we can start our own system of young people working with us year-round instead of just doing it over the summer. So employment and program opportunities are the two big things we're focusing on with youth.
Got it. Thank you. My second question for this round is, last General Assembly, there were, there was legislation passed banning certain materials from being used on playgrounds. And one of those issues was old tires, rubber mulch, and stuff like that. Can you speak to where we are as far as, I see that there's new playgrounds being constructed, like right now? Where are we with compliance with that policy? And where will we be moving forward as we continue to roll out new construction?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good question. So the House Bill 1147 is a legislative bill that goes into effect in October, which puts limitations of the amount of lead that can be used in poor and play surfaces. And also PFOS cannot be in that surface. What we've been doing even before the bill goes into effect, we have been communicating with our playground managers, because of course, you know, they have been monitoring this bill too. And what the law also requires is that as they, once the law go into effect, but we're, again, being more proactive than waiting, the law states that they must provide a letter stating that their surfaces meet the requirements. With this administration, what we've done as an additional step is we have decided to get a third-party vendor that we're working a contract now that's going to come in and test through of our surfaces that's recently been put in. But our contractors are in compliance now and they feel confident that the surfaces that they're putting in will meet the new state. But I think we as a city, just to be on the safe side, is taking an extra step in getting that surface inspected.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, did you have, it's okay?
Are the two of you, any more questions?
Yeah, I have--
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you very much. Along with playgrounds, so we have a situation in my district where one of my playgrounds was damaged in the uprising. Almost 10 years ago. It never got fixed, ever, until this year. We're finally getting a new playground and I'm very happy about it. We're getting all of these amazing new playgrounds across the city. Are we budgeting for maintenance? Because I can't have a situation where, in this particular case, that particular playground was basically put on fire. And part of it was melted. And there were sharp edges all over the place. And it sat there for 10, almost 10 years. People used it anyway. My own daughter was like, Mom, this playground is broken. Totally unacceptable for our kids. Completely unacceptable. I just want to make sure that since we're getting these amazing new playgrounds, including a new one at the one I was just mentioning, that when there is damage, that it can be repaired immediately.
So before, before the director starts, I want to make sure they recall this particular playground. Was this not the city schools playground?
This is the Lake Montebello playground. This is not the city schools playground.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
This is the, the Montebello one that's right off of the lake.
Got it. Thank you.
So, so Councilwoman, I'll tell you, yes. I mean, one of the things that we have committed to is our playground safety committee team has grown. Like there's a team of staff that's internal that's working on this. We went from one person now, she's up to three with this upcoming budget year. We are looking for a new safety playground coordinator, but, but that team is in place. That's one thing. Today, even on the Board of Estimates, there was playground contracts that was approved today. Part of that is also a maintenance contract with some of our playground companies. And then the third thing I would say is, in this year's budget, I mentioned earlier about the $200,000 has been dedicated for playground maintenance. So we get it. We want to see our playgrounds last and we want to be responsive. So I think you'll see in those three steps that we are committed to trying to maintain our playgrounds and be as responsive as we can as quick as we can.
And if I can just add too, we have great partners in Parks and People in Kaboom. So we have been working on our playground process. So we were one of the first cities that Kaboom announced their 25 and 5 to eradicate play space inequity. But one of the big conversations that we are imagining together is what maintenance looks like. So with Parks and People as a partner, trying to figure out if there is some synergy there that we could ensure that maintenance, as we're going out to get additional funding, if we're looking for philanthropy to, to invest that perhaps it is in playground maintenance. So it's something that is very top of mind of us, actually in working with the playbook and our consultants. Maintenance is one of the big things that we have to shift our mindset in. We've done a really amazing job with Director Moore and Adam in building these assets and bringing them into the system. Now we're into the next phase where we have to have the same amount of energy into maintenance and playgrounds. We've had some very good and fruitful conversations with Kaboom and Parks and People, looking at federal dollars and grants to make sure that maintenance is a part of how we look at playgrounds long-term.
I think we definitely have to have a line item each year for it because that, I mean, and not just rely on whether or not there's a grant. Because we don't, I don't want another child to say to me, whether it's mine or anybody else, the playground is broken. And, and so there, there needs to be some planning around that, particularly since we have so many new ones coming in, which I'm really thrilled about and really excited about the one at Lake Montebello coming up. And that would also include the surfaces, right? I have still two holes at the playground on Wyman Park Dell. And they're right under where the swings were. We no longer have swings there because we don't, we need to repair that surface. That has been a request in for, since COVID, because it happened during COVID. So we took the swings out during COVID and we haven't replaced them. So we just want to make sure that that, that cycle is happening so that, you know, those, those playgrounds can be used.
So I don't, I know, again, there was maintenance contracts added today that included some surface repairs. Ed, do you know if that-- Ed, do you know if that's, is Wyman Dell one of those locations?
Yes, we've actually been working with the contractor. We've made contact with them. They've come out, they've come out and made an inspection and we're just waiting to receive their quote for repairs.
So as you can see, today was a good day for us. When the playgrounds went to the board, that really can move several things, along with some new playgrounds that we needed to also get moving, so.
I appreciate it. And I do want to thank your park maintenance folks. The issues at Wyman Park Playground have been very complicated these last couple of years. So I appreciate, and I know that they've taken a long time and you've received many emails. But I do appreciate you working on the vault thing was totally weird. It was weird. And, but everybody solved it and that was good. So thanks for that and I look forward to continuing. Love to see, you know, those playgrounds taken care of, so. Thank you. That's it for me. Thanks.
Just to add to C.A. Leach, you weren't far off asking if it was connected with the school system. You were probably, because it was a similar situation with Windsor Hill Elementary, which had a problem with their playground, which is kind of connected in a sense to Wreckin Parks, but that playground was on school grounds. So you weren't far-fetched from that situation. Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to ask about one of the special facilities in my district and just what I noticed in the budget for Mount Pleasant Ice Rink. I noticed that the budget increased from $881,000 to $998,000. Is that just the normal year-to-year cost of living inflation adjustment? Or are there new investments planned for Mount Pleasant?
Give me one second for the flip to that.
This is page 348, volume two, of course.
Yeah, that's just the inflation increase of personnel costs for the staff that operates that facility. And then, you know, Mount Pleasant now is back at full. Couple of years ago was under renovation, so it is really generating the revenue to support it.
I see. So it wasn't operating at full capacity before and so--
Yeah.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. Now on park maintenance, just noting, I noticed that the percentage, that one of the outcome metrics is the percentage of facility maintenance SRs for rec centers completed on time and it's set for 50%. I was curious, why 50%? It seems low. You would expect that, you know, if on time-- This is kind of a chicken or the egg kind of problem. On time would suggest that we believe that we can accomplish it within this period and if we, if we can't, we would probably give ourselves a little bit of extra time. But why do we, why do we aim for 50% here?
So I will, I will tell you, our facility maintenance team consists of five buildings, building repairs. It's five positions, but we currently have three that are current. We have two vacancies and our, that area is, our staff is, we're starting to see an increase in call-out time because they're aging. So what we're doing, kind of what I mentioned earlier, is we're working with procurement because what we feel the long-term solution is going to be, we want to keep our positions, we want to grow our positions. As the chief of staff stated, I'm not sure if you was in the room, but one of the things our consultants is really harping on in this comprehensive plan is the amount of money that needs to be committed more so towards maintenance. But the third thing I would say is, us getting our own calls to kind of help our team will help us move this process faster. So it's just the reality of what we're dealing with, with manpower and resources at this point in time. But we like to get our, that number up, but that's the reason for the low number.
Yeah, no, that, it's interesting because I think, and I saw this in the metrics for another agency. I can't recall which one, but this is an interesting case in which us not meeting our sort of needed metrics on maintenance could have the result of seeing our facilities decline, which ends up costing us more down the line, which means we need now capital money, which we don't have enough capital money and it's a self-fulfilling prophecy. So I, you know, this is a difficult one here and I know you guys, you know, are struggling with resources here, but I don't know, I wish there was like a more scientific way for us to be strategic about our investment in regular maintenance in a way that would not result in us having to redo buildings or redo, you know, systems because we weren't able to keep up the maintenance on them.
So one of our long-term goals with this comprehensive strategy is looking at preventative maintenance, which is kind of more so in line with your, you know, us keep getting more routines into our systems and when things should be upgraded, when things should be, you know, something similar as HVAC system, filters--
Right.
When they're scheduled, they should be replaced at this point in time. So that is something that is being built into our comprehensive plan. That is why we're going to keep our consultants on to help us implement this new comprehensive plan once it's finalized. But we do feel that by bringing on these third-party own calls, it can help us tackle the challenges that we're seeing with some of our workforce. Because the other thing is, is the building maintenance and hiring is just not a Wreckin Parks problem. DGS has some of these same positions and we talk all the time. So it's, it's one of those where sometimes the private sector is a little bit more attractive than working in government. And so I think the alternative that we're looking at doing is similar to what you said, DGS, is having these own calls that can help us keep up without demand.
Yeah, yeah. I look at this issue as very similar to car maintenance. If you don't change your oil, you're going to regret it. And, you know, that $100 oil change or a $20 oil change, it'll be a lot more expensive if you miss it or you don't do it reliably. So, you know. Last question here is regarding park programs and events. I noticed that our outcome metric here is the number of events held. I'm not sure that that's all that helpful. I'm curious if we can add a performance measure focusing on our processing times for those permit requests. Just noting how long it takes to turn around a permit request and so that we can, you know, have a sort of smoothly working system when it comes. You look like you got an answer for that. Go for it.
No, I was only going to say, as it relates to permitting process, it's a citywide process. So there are only few permits that BCRP independently processes. C.A. Leach is working with the citywide team to look at the permitting process and to make improvements as it relates to efficiency and turn it all around. But by and large, the few that we do independently are athletic fields and park pavilions. Most, all other permits requires citywide coordination. And we have been working over the last year to come up with some processes in the system for the city system to move those along faster. So I think a measure that would be independent for Wreckin Parks could be around park pavilions and athletic fields, which I imagine you don't get that many calls about because we manage that process pretty well. I think we are working with our sister agencies on the overall permitting process that, I don't know if it'd be appropriate for a BCRP measure that has other agencies tied into our--
I would agree. I didn't, I didn't realize. So if I'm understanding you correctly, park pavilions and playing fields--
Yes.
You guys man-manage--
All by ourselves.
What don't you manage but still is in parks?
So like large events, if you think about like an Afram, that is a citywide permit. If you think about a big event at Rashfield, that's a citywide permit. So the permits that typically take longer to process are not independent Wreckin Parks processing. But we're working really good with our partners at DOT to make sure there's better coordination while the system is being overhauled, that we can improve those response times. But the ones that we are all of our own are just athletic permits and the park pavilion permits.
That is helpful to know. And I'm guessing for, you know, those larger events, the reason why they take longer is because they need sound equipment and they need other equipment--
And security and city services and tents and tables and trashcans and street closures.
Got it. And so what events are counted under the current measure? Are we including the large and the smaller events or--
No, these are larger events. So we wouldn't be counting how many birthday parties we had under a pavilion. So I believe that measure is our citywide event. So if you think about our Rhythm and Real Series where we're having movies and bands in the park. If you think about Charm City Live where we're downtown. So I think there's, those are the type of things that are captured in that measure to make sure we have robust offerings of like citywide events.
Yeah, yeah. If I can request that we figure out what the Wreckin Parks specific component of those events and those permit turnaround times are and have a strong sense of whether or not we're meeting our expectations there or the average number of days, whatever the metric is, I don't care. Just so that we know how well we are doing as a department. And it helps, you know, help us think about how we can improve people's interaction with the system in our parks. So that's all I've got. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for answering the questions and sharing your progress. And we're hopeful to continue to have wonderful, wonderful things happen with the Department of Recreation and Parks. Thank you, Director Moore, and we are recessed for, until 6:00 PM. Thank you.